Yet, right, Jean? Or should we start?
We are now.
We are.
Okay, then I'm going to gavel the meeting to order. This is the August 27, 2020, meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. And the first order of business is to turn it over to Jean Gatz and Cindy Spence, who will handle the virtual meeting rules. Thank you, Jean.
Yep, I'll take care of that. All right. I am hopefully sharing our screens. Oh, thank you, everybody, for your patience. Welcome to the planning board meeting. We are glad everyone is here. We are aiming to keep these meetings respectful and orderly. And as such, we have a few rules and protocol for the meeting. The first one is that any activities that disrupt, delay, or interfere with the meeting are prohibited, just as it would be for a meeting in person. The time for speaking and for asking questions is limited. So either I or the board chair will recognize the applicants or the public. We will unmute you. We'll need anyone attending to address the board and use a full name in your Zoom profile. If your full name is not currently displayed, please change it, or you can send it to me in the chat, and I am happy to change it for you. No video will be allowed. All right, turn, switch, there we go. No video will be permitted, except for board, staff, and applicants. All others will participate by voice only. So thank you for helping us with that. Harmon and I, or the board chair and I, or Cindy, if she is acting host, will enforce all of these rules by muting anyone who violates the rules. So please don't do that. The chat function should only be used for technical issues to communicate with me or Cindy as the host. Please don't ask questions about the projects or about the content, because just as we would be if we were in council chambers, we can't ask, answer questions, or talk amongst ourselves on the side. And then only the staff and the board members will be allowed to share their screens. Once we get to the public hearing, for members of the community, you'll use the raise hand function to indicate that you'd like to speak. And you should find this easily at the bottom of your screen. For anyone that's on the phone, you can press star nine to indicate that you'd like to speak during the, during public participation or during the public hearing. I will call on those who have raised hands and unmute you. And as I mentioned, testimony will be voice only. I'll aim to tee up several speakers so that you'll know when your turn is coming up. Speakers will have three minutes to address the board. I really don't like cutting people off, but I will mute you out of fairness to everyone if you go beyond three minutes. And instead of showing a timer on the screen, I'm going to use these fun little yellow and red papers to let you know. So the yellow is when you've got 30 seconds remaining, and red is please wrap up. And let's see, as I mentioned, a full name associated with each person in the meeting. We are not using the Q and A function, and we are also not pulling time. And that's all I've got. Cindy, did I miss anything? Okay, Harmon, back to you.
Go ahead, Cindy. Cindy, if you have anything.
Nope, everything's fine.
Great, appreciate it. Okay, then the next order of business is to review the July 30, 2020 minutes, which have been provided to us, and I assume we've all provided our feedback to Cindy. Is there any discussion around approval of the minutes? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Is that you, John?
I'll move to approve them.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, David? So we've got a motion on the floor from Gerstle, seconded by Ensign, to approve the July 30, 2020 minutes. I'll call a roll call vote. Am I correct in seeing that Lupita is in the meeting?
He just joined us.
Okay, good. So let the record show Lupita Montoya joined the meeting at 6:11, and we'll take the roll call vote now. David Ensign?
Aye.
Lisa Smith?
Aye.
Peter Vitale?
Aye.
John Gerstle?
Aye.
Sarah Silver?
Aye.
Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, so the minutes are approved. Next item is public participation. And Jean alluded to the purpose of this item earlier in the rules. We're here to listen at this point to any member of the public that wants to address the planning board on any item that they deem to be relevant to us, but which is not among the public hearing items tonight. So if you're here to talk to the site review at 2,400 or 2,450 Central Avenue, or the ordinance regarding the land use code, then you'll, you'll speak in, in those, after those public, or after those presentations. So I'm going to turn it over to Jean to run the general public comment section of the meeting.
Thanks, Harmon. Again, please use the raise hand function to let us know if you would like to participate in the open comment. I am not seeing any raised hands. I do see one person on the phone. You can press star nine to let us know if you would like to speak to this one, or we can, if you're here to speak to the next ones, we can use that function at that point. Okay, I think nobody's here for open comment. We'll probably have some speakers for the other public hearings.
Okay, well, then what we're going to do is we're going to go into the first item on the public hearing agenda, and that item is, yeah, because the, the item for discussions of dispositions, planning board cops, and continuations is moot as there are none. So the first public agenda item, which is in our agenda as item 5A, is a public hearing in consideration of a site review application, case LUR 2020, that quadruple zero eight for the redevelopment of the site located at 2,400 and 2,450 Central Avenue with an approximately 144,500 square foot two-story office building within the Flatiron Industrial Business Park and the Industrial General or IG zoning district. The proposal also includes parking landscaping and access improvements for other adjacent and commonly owned properties of 2,300, 2,465, 2,545, 2,590, and 5979 Central Avenue. A 7% parking reduction is requested. Before we go on, and I turn it over to staff, this is the time when we discuss any planning board member disclosures around ex parte communications or recusals. So if, if any planning board member has a reason to disclose or to recuse, now is your time. John?
Yeah, I have two things to say. One is that I'm the one who called it up, so I just wanted to give a brief explanation why I did that. But beyond that, I'm on the East Boulder sub-community planning team as the, as the planning board lay us on. And beyond that, I, I don't think there's any conflicts that I need to mention.
Okay, I can't see everybody. Let me change.
I have one, Harmon.
Go for it.
So I just want to disclose that after the concept review, I got into, I think it was a separate event, I got into a conversation with Kurt Nordback about the connectivity in the TMP of multi-use path to the south of the site. And the two of us actually met out there on our bicycles just to take a look at the levee and talk about that. We did not talk about any details of the particular proposal in front of us. We pretty much stuck with, with the TMP aspects of that connectivity. And I, I don't think that that would, there was also an email from Edward Stafford replying to Kurt Nordback's, back's questions about that, that I think the entire planning board got today. So that pretty much is kind of the scope of what we were looking at. So I would, don't think that it would have any impact on my ability to be objective in this site, site review.
Okay. How, I'm going to give you a second to jump in if you, you want to add to the sufficiency of that disclosure.
Yeah, David, can you tell us if you can make a decision today fair and impartially, solely based on the evidence that's being presented for the hearing?
Yes, I can.
Thanks. And then I think for staff, it would be good if, if that email that Edward sent, if that could be presented as well, maybe at, at the end of Elaine's presentation, just so that the record is complete.
Okay, I think that was more of a comment to staff than to you, David. Does anybody else have a disclosure to make? Okay. I think it's just fair to disclose that most of us on planning board, we're here for the concept review, as, as was I, but not all of us. So there is a slight difference in the amount of information that all the planning board members have in that respect. Going to turn it over now to Charles Farrow, the Development Services Manager, and he'll take it on. John, hold on. Yeah, John?
Yeah, I, I, this may be the appropriate time just to say why I called it up, and just to indicate that it's not that I have any special immediate concern or dislike this project, but I want to make the planning board aware that we have a very significant effort going in on the sub-community planning for this area, in, in which we have, the city has devoted a lot of resources. And because of that, and because of the significance of this project in, in the middle of that sub-community area plan, I wanted to make sure that the entire planning board had thought carefully about how they want to move ahead with this project, although the sub-community plan has not moved ahead to the extent that it, it would give concrete guidance on this specific project. But that's the, that's the reason why I called it up.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation, John. And, and Charles, if I got your title wrong, I don't know if that's your old one, or if it, if I got it right, that's fine, but if I got it wrong, please correct me.
Development Review Manager, and then also serving as the interim comprehensive planning manager.
You are the man. Well, listen, it's, it's on you now.
Yeah, so thanks very much for that, Board Member Gerstle, that's very helpful. I'm going to turn it over to Elaine McLaughlin to present staff's analysis this evening. But before I do, I would make note that Kathleen King, who is the project manager for the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, is also joining us this evening, so she can respond to questions related to the three scenarios that staff and the working group are, are formulating right now, and how that may or may not impact this site. So with that said, I'm happy to pass it over to Elaine.
Thanks, Charles. Good evening, everyone. Just going to start scrolling through these, starting right at the top with the broad context just to get us all oriented, although most of us know where it is. It's halfway between Valmont and Arapahoe and Boulder. And so when we move in a little bit closer, we can see that contextually it's located near a wide variety of uses, and everything from the nearby Stasio Ballfields to Western Disposal, Boulder Jewish Commons is out towards the southeast, municipal golf course, Boulder Dinner Theater, a lot of office and retail, along with restaurants nearby at 55th and Arapahoe, and then residential is primarily to the south. And so the basis, of course, of that build out is the land use and zoning for the area. So specific to the site and Flatiron Business Park, the comp plan refers to industrial land use, and it's described essentially as consisting of research and development, light manufacturing, media storage, other intensive employment uses. And then consistent with that, of course, is the zoning, general industrial, also sites, light industrial uses, research, service industrial. And it's noteworthy that both of these, both the comp plan and the zoning, suggest that residential could be appropriate in certain circumstances or locations. And of course, in terms of transit, the site served by both RTB, the Flatiron Flyer six bus that goes from Union Station at Denver and other regional stops, and that includes Flatiron Business Park, and then it goes on to, to downtown Boulder. And then locally, there's the 206 and the 208, and there's regular service six days a week. So the Flatiron Business Park was established in the 1960s, and it was essentially built out since that time. So you get quite a bit of variation in the building character. It was originally annexed in with a subdivision. So again, most of it's by right development. It's home to companies, both large and small, that include the Daily Camera Newspaper, tech and biopharma companies. There's also the County Sheriff's Office. And then it's also important to note that in recent times, properties in the business park have begun to redevelop, either through adaptive reuse or through new construction. And there's an emergence of what is considered creative industries in the business park, and that includes things like craft food and breweries, marketing companies, and outdoor gear companies. So looking at the properties that are continuously owned, it's around 14 acres, and the two lots that are currently proposed for redevelopment on 2,400 and 2,450, you can see them highlighted there, are about four acres. And you'll note in this context, from the character, you can see most of the buildings were built out 60s and 70s, some in the more recent 80s and 90s. So for the overall site proposal and the continuously owned property, there's seven buildings, and it totals around 220,000 square feet, and that's approximately 0.36 FAR, where 0.5 is permitted. And with the redevelopment of 2,42450 Central, there'll be a net increase of about 73,500 square feet. And that's a slight increase in FAR for a total, cumulative total of 0.47, again, where 0.5 is the maximum. So as part of the improvements that are planned, the applicants proposing to implement several sidewalk and landscape improvements through this continuously owned property. For the proposed project, there's no modifications to form a bulk standards, and under the site review process, the applicants requesting to average the floor area across multiple sites, that leverages the, the unbuilt portions of the maximum FAR to build the new building at 2,42450. So on that site, the applicants proposing to demo the existing twin office buildings, essentially the same type of building built side by side, and then construct a 144,500 square foot, three-story contemporary office building, shown with two perpendicular wings. They're interconnected by a second-story walkway with a roof deck and contemporary materials. And then the applicant will hopefully be able to review this in a bit more depth in terms of the design process. And then, like the contemporary building forms, the applicants also proposing contemporary landscaping with plant-massing, modernist planter pots, contemporary furnishings like tables, lounge chairs, and benches. And then as part of the site review, the applicants requesting a 7% parking reduction overall, over all those sites, it works out to be about 20% for the site itself. But in that regard, they're also proposing ban pool, carpool, parking spaces, electric vehicle charging spaces. There is a requirement for ecopasses for employees, and also as part of that, there's a proposal for 56 additional short-term bike parking spaces throughout, 24 on the site, 162 long-term spaces throughout, with 73 on the site. And so when we turn to key issues, key issue one is consistency with the BBCP land use and light industrial. Of course, it meets that land use typology. And there's a number of policies that our staff found to be consistent with, and those include 1.06 and 2.03 that are pretty similar in that they emphasize compact redevelopment. And in this case, of course, as an infill site, it's consistent with that intended compact pattern of land use. And then similarly for policies 2.21 and that related policy 5.01, where there's a goal to support and preserve existing industrial areas for, quote, "industry and innovation", specifically to revitalize these industrial areas. This policy calls out East Boulder Industrial Area, where this site's located. So obviously, it's consistent with that policy. And then in terms of findings for site review criteria, the packet has all of the findings. But just to summarize, it's, it was found to be consistent with site review criteria that, in that it's a new building, and it's going to be more energy efficient, obviously, and attractive, and would probably spur additional redevelopment and revitalization through the business park. The improvements also help connectivity throughout these continuously owned properties, and there's augmented landscaping throughout those properties where it's necessitated to infill, and particularly along Central Avenue, filling in the streetscape. So then for key issue three, Board, Board Member Gerstle brought up the call up, and so because it was specifically called up that it's in the East Boulder Sub-Community Planning Area, and that there were concerns that we look at the objectives of that with a big picture in mind. In that regard, it's important to note that the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan's entering into the middle of a two-year planning process, where the inventory and analysis of the area was most recently compiled. The next step in the concept development is where we are in the process. It's followed by scenario testing, alternative futures planning, implementation planning. And so that's further down the road, and as you'll note, it's, planned adoption is in 2021. And as Charles noted, Kathleen's available to answer questions this evening. But I thought it was actually really helpful to take a look at some of the recently completed inventory findings for the area. Interesting fact about East Boulder, including the business park, there's about 820 businesses in this area. There's 90% small businesses with fewer than 50 employees. And of course, this is all of that East Boulder Sub-Community Plan area, but there's 300 of the city's primary employers in the planning area, and those generate more than half their revenue from outside Boulder. But that in turn brings in new money to Boulder economy to support secondary employees, like restaurants and retailers. So it's also home to 41% manufacturing businesses and 17% of the workers in the city. I thought all that was fascinating. But as was noted in the memo, because adoption isn't anticipated until 2021, we can't make findings for the site review approval based on the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. And like I say, if you have specific questions, Kathleen's available to answer them. So with that, staff recommends planning board approve the application with the recommended motion, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Elaine. Appreciate that presentation. If you don't mind taking down the, the presentation, that would be great. Okay. So I'm going to turn it over to board members who, well, first of all, let's see if there's anyone from the public who wants, sorry, I'm a little distracted after my late arrival. Do board members have any questions for staff regarding the presentation? And I think I'll give preference to John first, if, if he wants to lead off. Otherwise, I'll take Sarah Silver.
Sarah, go ahead and.
No, no, John, John, go.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, can you tell us anything about whether this is likely to be a single user of the office space, or if this is intended to be many smaller users?
I think that's a great question for the applicant, but from what I can tell, it's essentially a tenant finish with opportunity to occupy the entire building, but I do think that's a great question for the applicant.
Well, the applicant will get the, a chance at that, too, I hope. And then also, with respect to the distribution of the, of the parking over an area wider than the specific lots associated with, with this project, is that a standard approach of the city to, to allow the parking impacts to be distributed over different lots with, with similar ownership?
Well, this is all united together through one site review. And so because of that, the applicant can share across their multiple properties, parking spaces among the users. And so this will always be united as a site review. If there's not available parking in one location, they could use another location, but.
I mean, I understand the, the concept, of course, but what I'm trying to understand is whether, if the, say the client wants to do a remodel of one of the other buildings that we're now dealing with here, is, does that have to come as part of a joint site review for all of the properties, as does this? Or can he deal with that separately, and then he'll, he'll deal with the parking issues separately on that specific lot that already is impacted by our decision here?
So this approval would run with the property, and that means all seven properties, or in this case, it's going to be six properties. Any changes that might occur on another one of the properties, depending on the threshold that it meets? If it meets a minor mod threshold, or further a minor site review amendment threshold, it would always have to be looked at in the lens of this approval.
So there is some, some memory associated with new applications, though?
Correct. It runs with the title of each of these properties.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. So my question is actually a follow-up to that. So if one of the part, if the owner of the parcel sells one of the parcels, is also attached to the, the allowed development capacity of the total, even though it's no longer owned by this particular applicant?
That's correct. Yeah, that's how it works. And that's true, if you think of other PUDs that we have, where there's multiple ownerships, it's always subject to that baseline. And so in this case, because this would be at a 0.47 FAR, and you can only go up to 0.5, there's not a lot of room for additional floor area in those other properties.
So Harmon, can I just follow up with a question? So in terms of it then meeting the Boulder Valley Comp Plan goal of encouraging redevelopment, I'm just curious, in some ways, because it's absorbing some of the FAR from the whole site, it actually might discourage redevelopment on some of the other parcels. Is that a fair thing to be a little concerned about?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, when, when we presented the image of how it's currently redeveloping, and there's a lot of creative industries going in, some folks retrofitted existing buildings and others built new buildings, but they would have to be capped at a threshold based on FAR. But it doesn't preclude that. I think what happens, of course, is there's a ripple effect, and once somebody redevelops and improves it, it entices others to want to improve their property as well.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody else from planning board before we go to the applicant presentation? Lisa?
I think this is a question for staff, or perhaps also for John with the ongoing work on the community plan. So back to that question around kind of pooled parking. So this is, this is kind of almost like applying, I don't know, I have, I'm partial to the Sump Principles, to shared parking, and every time I go through that area, I observe that there, understandably, each parcel, you know, has allocated spots for their people, but it can end up with a lot of excess space. Is that something that staff is working on, or that the committee is working on as they look at the community plan? And how does this fit into that, that some principles are kind of looking at pooled parking?
Kathleen, have any feedback, or John from East Boulder Sub-Community Plan?
I think Kathleen is, Kathleen is running the show. Maybe she should respond first.
Sure, I can talk a little bit about some of the thoughts related to parking in that area right now. So the city recently completed, I think in 2019, there was a study of parking utilization in that area over the last five years. And it is overparked, I think, 24 to 36%. So we know that we have a lot of unused space. And so one of the things that I think the working group, and we'll be working more with community members to talk about is, how do they want to reallocate that space? How can How can we better use some of the unused parking for other, either amenities or redevelopment or a variety of other ways that might meet some of our citywide goals? So that's, I think that's the perspective from the sub community plan. I can't, now I can't remember the second part of your question.
Most of, I was, I guess I was also wondering, I know it had a, I think a 7% parking reduction. I don't have that page pulled up. But does that fit with kind of the direction we're going? Is that too low of a parking reduction? You know, I guess I'm just trying to make sure as we look at this particular project that we're looking out to the future, you know, of that overparked nature of the whole area and, you know, if that's something we should be considering.
Well, and one point of clarification really quick on the site itself, it's more like a 20% parking reduction if you were to just look at it as a discrete parcel. But overall, it's spread out, works out to be 7%.
Gotcha. Yeah, so for that little piece, it's like a, you said for that piece, it's a 20%, but then if you look at the whole PUD, it's more.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess it's just something I want to make sure we're looking ahead and not kind of painting ourselves in a corner.
John first, then Sarah again?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, a question for Elaine. Can you talk about the possibility of having, requiring an unbundled parking arrangement in this, you know, office area as a condition? And have you considered it and what thoughts did you have about that?
Well, because unbundling is essentially part of the Sump Principles. Among the Sump Principles that are applying, of course, is shared. It's not managed and paid, except to the extent that it's going to be a single owner. So the management could conceivably manage how people park throughout the site. But there's not been a discussion of unbundling the parking. And, you know, I'm not sure that would necessarily apply yet. And maybe it's something that could come out of the sub community plan.
Well, I suppose it's something that could come out of our evaluation of this tonight as well, isn't it?
I'll defer that question to Hella.
Yeah, I think it could be incorporated as a TDM type measure to discourage use of the single occupant vehicle. And in unbundling, I assume that we would require that parking wouldn't be provided to employees for free.
Yeah, I mean, some requiring some sort of explicit payment for parking arrangement. Okay, thank you.
Can I go? Harmon?
Yeah, please, Sarah.
Thanks. My memory may not be serving me well, but is this a project? When we look at the concept plan for this project, is this the project where the question was raised about the context for other redevelopment of buildings on, of these collective? It was actually, there was a whole discussion about what else the applicant might be considering to create this campus. And I believe John brought up the question way back when about how challenging it might be to evaluate a project if we didn't know what else was happening on the campus or was being proposed for the campus. Was, did that become part of the conversation between the applicant and the city at all?
No, it wasn't. And the applicants available and the property owners available to ask that question. But I think they've also been pretty much involved in the East Boulder Sub Community Plan. And I'll look to Kathleen or to the property owner to confirm that. But, you know, I think that'll help spur opportunities for how and what type of character they may want to uses they may want to achieve on their property. Kathleen, any thoughts?
Yeah, so the property owner is a representative, is a member of our working group. And so really involved in the conversations about some of the goals for this area and thinking about what potential changes could benefit the overall sub community and achieve some of the citywide goals.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's not totally answering my question. So I'll ask the applicant if they can present the broader campus concept that they have. Thank you.
Any other planning board questions? Yeah, I'm gonna turn it back on over to Elaine. And Elaine, if you can help the applicant with their presentation. The applicant's got 15 minutes, three minutes for rebuttal if they choose to use it. Though that's not necessary, it's up to them to decide whether it's necessary. But 15 minutes for the presentation for sure. Go ahead, Elaine.
All right. I will get this queued up hopefully for the applicant. It can go from here. Okay, so I'll keep time and at two minutes, I'll do a two minutes. So we can try to help you stay on track. I'm gonna try and get us back to the beginning, having some technical difficulties, so bear with me. We have to start over. About that, let me just give it a go from the beginning again. And it's a little bit of a different format, so hopefully this can work. I'm gonna queue it up in the background. And there we go. All right. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Elaine. Hi, everyone. I am Amanda Johnson with Oz Architecture. Thank you for seeing us in such a strange state. I was actually considering making my background over here council chambers so that it could be a little bit more familiar for all of us, but I couldn't find a picture. But anyways, well, you know, we may have been a little bit surprised that our project received a call up. We're really excited to share enhancements to this development with you all since we've joined you for our concept review. Since then, we've worked really hard to craft an excellent, energy efficient building within the city of Boulder. Next. We've organized our presentation to begin with a macro overview of our involvement in Flatiron Park. To, so the master plan that has been discussed. And we've been involved in that over the last nine years. And then we will talk about some specific design responses to our site review criteria for 2400 Central. And then finally, our involvement in the East Boulder Working Group. The applicant Crescent Real Estate has owned a majority of the buildings within Flatiron Park since 2011. This, you can see a macro overview of our master plan and the projects that we've touched and the things that we've been involved in. It's been our goal or their goal to invest in upgrading and revitalizing late 70s and 80s genre architecture as Elaine had mentioned and provide opportunities for complementary uses which further advance and support comp plan policies. For example, Crescent brought Upslope Brewery, which is number eight, into Flatiron Park at the very beginning. And also expanded Ozo Coffee Roasting, which is number five, into a retail coffee shop. Our client Crescent has always supported delivering cutting edge, energy efficient solutions and buildings. Number three was also in Elaine's great presentation. But it's one of Boulder's most sustainable buildings. It's built out of, and it's also the first cross laminated timber office building that has, is delivered in the city of Boulder. So we're really proud of that as well. Today, we're here to discuss number six and next Elaine, which is 2400 Central. This upgrades and replaces the two 1980s technical office buildings that you see there. But, and you can see in this existing slide where they're located and how they, the footprint of the buildings that they take up on site. Next. Our proposal crafts an energy efficient, thoughtful structure. It enhances multimodal connectivity that Elaine also mentioned and is designed to support expanding needs in our community. I think it was also questioned or brought up on planning board discussion. But it's worth noting here that Crescent has been discussing this opportunity with existing Boulder employers who are looking to grow and retain their presence in Boulder with technical and lab uses. Next. This is a summary of the land use criteria which is applicable to our site. The design team made every effort to craft a building that exceeds minimum criteria wherever possible and will touch on specifics for you throughout the presentation. Next. This is a photograph of the existing buildings at 2400 Central. Next. As a replacement to what is existing, imagine now approaching our proposed project. We've appropriately scaled the buildings to the neighborhood with two and three story volumes. We've provided warmth at the pedestrian level and upgraded materiality and beyond energy efficient total assembly. Next. While it might not be specific in the criteria, it's also our professional obligation to respect views and sighting of the building. The orientation of this building allows us to celebrate one of Boulder's most coveted natural gifts. And also completely or nearly completely shields parking from the street. We have a killer outdoor experience which you can see in the bottom left of the screen with this permeable paver plaza. This plaza supports our water quality goals. It also reduces the heat island effect of our parking lot. And hang tight for specifics in a few slides where we illustrate more about our parking lot landscaping. But you can see here the enhanced shading that we are currently proposing. Next. And next. Thank you. Because your decision tonight is based on our compliance with the site review criteria, we'd like to illustrate how the proposed design has thoughtfully exceeded compliance in many categories. Next. First, speaking to open space, which was discussed tonight, we'd like to highlight that the proposed building footprint is 17,000 square feet smaller than the existing buildings on site, which also allows us to exceed the minimum open space requirement. Next. Landscape design has played a significant role in our proposal and we'll mention it again and probably again. But specifically, you can see how these bullet points show our landscaped area and planting qualities exceed site review requirements. Next. No worries.
I can't go back.
That's okay. It was a really good slide.
I'll get back to it later.
Wanted to point out in the slide that was just skipped is that there's a really complicated existing circulation pattern for both pedestrians and vehicles. And it's really positive to point that our collaboration with staff has allowed us to reduce the curb cuts and drivelines down to two, I think it's six, it's currently on site, which enhances pedestrian connectivity to our neighbors. We've also exceeded the onsite bicycle parking requirements by 20 spaces. And on this slide, where we're talking about parking, our development supports a reduction in single occupancy vehicular trips to our location. We, you've already heard the parking reduction facts that we have proposed. But we're also, or the applicant is providing eco passes to tenants. We have dedicated car sharing spaces on site and 20 electric vehicle charging stations immediate to the building. Next. We've spoken about the building already and in terms of the design, it can go on and on and on and on about this. But because it's part of the site review criteria, we just wanted to reiterate how thoughtfully we've updated and replaced the current structures that are there. Next. To touch specifically on our solar and energy strategies, you can see we've utilized almost all of the available roof space for our photovoltaic system. This exceeds city standards and is validated by our energy model. Suddenly, but I'll tell you because it's a secret, the push and pulls of the facade also provide naturally shaded areas and reduced interior cooling loads on the building's HVAC system. Next. We know that this site is important and we also wanted to touch on our awareness and participation in the East Boulder Working Group. So I'd like to introduce the applicant, Ben Mulk, from Crescent Real Estate, who has been participating since its inception in 2019. Next.
Yeah, thanks Amanda. So as was pointed out previously, we are certainly aware this site is within the sub community plan area. I am in fact a member of the East Boulder Working Group. And while not part of the site review criteria, we believe the building is in keeping with all contemplated plans for the location. Next. And you can see those are, those are kind of from our previous meeting, the one before, contemplated plans being discussed in the East Boulder Working Group. So I guess in conclusion, we're confident we have exceeded the site review criteria. We want to thank everyone for the opportunity to present our project and we look forward to answering your questions as it relates to our new project. Thanks.
So is that the end of the applicant presentation?
That is, thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. So I just want to remind staff that Hella had suggested that we get, that we get Edward Stafford's letter into the record. So we'll do that after we hear questions for the applicant from planning board. I saw John's hand up, John Gerstle.
Yeah, thank you. And nice to see you again, Ben. I, I think your participation in the working group has been great. Who do you imagine will be using this building? Do you, are you thinking of a single large office user or is it 25 small ones? Or what's your plans there?
Yeah, we certainly don't have a lease executed with any, any one group for this project. I guess I would just point out that we're talking to multiple existing primary employers that require more space and this project will allow the city of Boulder to retain them. So we don't know necessarily if it's a single user yet. So we can't, we wouldn't be able to commit to that necessarily, but certainly very likely to be, you know, the ones we're talking to, like I mentioned, are all existing primary employers who we would want to help the city retain.
Thanks. And can I follow up on that?
Absolutely.
So some of the area that will be replaced is now light industrial, if I understand correctly. But you're essentially replacing it all with office spaces, is that correct? Or is there light industrial intended in the building that you're proposing as well?
The, you know, again, not, not having a signed lease, it's hard to know exactly which, how the space will be utilized. I can say that the groups that we're talking to intend, most of them actually have a portion of lab use, which is very typical of a light industrial space throughout the park. So not dissimilar from the existing buildings, we would, we would anticipate similar usage to what we have there. Just a more modern building that better meets Boulder's goals in our opinion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sarah? You want to unmute though?
Sorry, thank you. Could we go back to the last slide from the applicant that lays out some of the, what I guess are the current thinking about the East Boulder community plan? And maybe this is something both Kathleen and the applicant can speak to. Could you just sort of walk us through, you very quickly said, what we're trying to do here fits with these test concepts and then zipped on through the test concepts. So I'm wondering if we might spend a minute or two just exploring the test concepts and how your proposal fits with each of these. That would be very helpful to me.
Yeah, and I can certainly address that or. Yeah, and I can certainly address that or Kathleen if you would prefer it entirely.
I might start and just say the image that's on the slide is, these are old versions of the working group developed concepts and planning board will see the updated versions and will have a much larger discussion around this at the September 17th planning board meeting.
Can we still do a quick thumbnail or just, one of the reasons this was called up was because of the question of the intersection of the process of the East Boulder Community Plan and this proposal, how those two fit together. So just since we're being asked to vote on this prior to getting any update, it would really be helpful for those of us who are not liaisons to just get a little bit of insight. That would be very helpful.
I agree with Sarah.
Sure. Okay. So what I can say about what you're looking at, I guess, since they are a little bit out of date is the thinking in the Flatiron Business Park specifically is that there are opportunities and interest from the working group to test what the impacts would be if we were to change some land uses along the 55th Street corridor to allow for potentially high density residential. So that's what you're looking at, at test concept two. And then in test concept three, the thought is to change land uses in Flatiron Business Park from the light industrial to the mixed use industrial, which would allow us to think a little bit more intensely and maybe intentionally about incorporating housing opportunities paired with some of the great office uses and industrial, light industrial businesses that are out there today to build that 15-minute neighborhood and creating more of a live work environment for a lot of the workforce that's out there today.
So that would mean perhaps displacing some of the existing industrial uses that are there?
Yeah, that would be one of the trade-offs that we'll have to talk about throughout the process.
So then this raises a question and I'm sorry, I don't want to take us off in a completely different direction, but I think it would help to understand, how does the East Boulder Subcommunity Planning Process intersect with the use table review planning process? Because the issue about industrial zones was a very important discussion that we had. There's concern about transforming industrial areas into residential areas.
Yeah, I think part of what can come out of the subcommunity plan is to make recommendations that would align with the work that the use table group is doing. Alternatively, there could be land use changes proposed for this area that would rezone, you know, look at rezoning entirely.
I want to cut you off. I, you know, I think personally, you know, I'm pretty invested in policy 2.21 and I would have a lot of trouble voting to approve an East Boulder Subcommunity Plan that involved the usurpation of existing light industrial uses for residential. That's really a policy discussion that's going to come in front of us. There's no residential proposed with this project and I really want to stay on this project right now. So great questions, but.
If I can just offer an alternative perspective and I'm happy to put aside the use table question, but the question I had asked of staff and want to get, I was trying to get to with the applicant was this is part of a campus thing that they're imagining, that can only happen within the reality of whatever happens with the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. So that's the basis for asking them, what does their campus vision look like? And I do think that's a, I personally think that's a legitimate question to ask vis a vis this proposal.
Okay, that's not the question that you phrased a few minutes ago around the subcommunity plan.
That's because I had to, I was trying to understand the context within which I was going to ask this question, so.
Okay, let's, I'll let you ask that question. Go ahead.
Thank you for letting me ask that question. To the applicant, could you talk a bit about the campus concept that you have?
I think, you know, I would tell you that we certainly are generally speaking, looking to build projects that meet the current intentions of the city and we're working very closely with the East Boulder Working Group to make sure that we're really keeping our finger on the pulse to understand what, how things are moving going forward. As you can see that this, there are certainly areas of Flatiron Business Park that people, the community wants to evaluate different changes. And so I would tell you that whatever plan we have, we would want to incorporate the changes that happen. As it relates to this specific project, I don't think anyone's really looking for more dramatic changes. And to Kathleen's point, you know, the image up here is certainly not the most up to date and the most up to date we got last night, otherwise I would have been very happy to incorporate it, I promise. I'm not trying to use an older one. But just generally speaking, at the back of the park, everything that's been discussed has been to kind of retain similar uses. And this project fits within the existing, you know, code and uses and everything else. And also, in our opinion, fits very well with the changes that are being contemplated in scenario three, which is the only one that incorporates changes, which is a move to a more mixed use industrial versus what's industrial today. So I think we want to continue to work very closely as we have been with the East Boulder Working Group and staff and everyone else to make sure that, you know, our plans for the park continue to be the best plans for the city and for everyone else. And we want to continue to kind of evolve that with this process, if that makes sense.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from planning board for the applicant? John?
Yeah, if I can go back to the parking issues that we, you've heard some discussion earlier tonight. I'm concerned, I just wonder if by spreading the parking associated with this building around the other land that you own, how that may impact future development that may be desirable as a consequence of the East Boulder Subcommunity efforts going on now. And the other related question is what your thoughts might be on having, on unbundling the parking from the office rent?
Yeah, certainly. So I guess I would say that by us kind of putting all these sites together in the site review process, we think we really helped to meet that goal because now it is a shared resource. So it does, it's not as available as it was and we kind of reduced that sea of parking that was available going into this. As it relates to unbundled, it's a little more challenging in an industrial zone versus an office, you know, in my mind. And I guess I would just say that because if you look at the uses around here, you know, we have a, you know, biotech manufacturing facility just north of this parcel and we have other more traditional industrial uses, like a catering kitchen in the park that has, their requirements for parking are actually a little different than maybe you would see on a traditional office building where it's a little easier to do that. They come to us and say, well, we want to have access for 52-foot trucks and everything else and we accommodate that in order to, you know, because that's kind of part of our zoning. So, and a lot of the buildings that are in this review are also, they're actually fully occupied by existing industrials users that we have long leases with and are, you know, big employers in the city and that we want to retain. So we want to make sure that we continue to give them the access they need to do their business. I hope that answers your question, John. I don't know if I did, but if I can clarify, please, you know.
Well, regarding the bundled, the unbundled parking, it didn't exactly answer it because you, but maybe there is, maybe it's difficult to answer, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess.
Something more direct than that.
John, could I offer something? When we talk about unbundled parking, typically the context is a bit different than sort of the typology of a suburban office park. Some principles are really designed to support close proximity to transit. And while we do have bus service out there, the bus service, I think in its current form probably would be difficult to support a some principle. What we would typically see out in an area like this with more of a suburban office typology is really more of a parking cash out program to help disincentivize people from driving a single occupant vehicle into work and seeking out alt modes or, you know, cycling, walking, those sorts of things. But what we would typically see in a property like this, people would start parking up the street and what we've seen in the past is they start looking for other, you know, parking lots that, you know, maybe aren't unbundled and parking illegally. So I think we would really just be driving folks out into the street, potentially into other people's parking areas, then we'd be left with some empty parking fields.
Well, I know that's what happens a lot with, when you unbundle parking, but part of the game, but we're making huge efforts to improve public transit there with the rapid, you know, bus transit out of Rappahoe and so on. So I would hate for that to be moving ahead without some consideration of what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, some principles, you know, through the area planning effort, you know, makes a lot of sense and it's definitely the right thing to do and we will have improved transit there in the future compared to what we have today. So I just thought I would offer that just generically, when you think about the typology of how you apply some principles, that's typically the practice is that, you know, when you have more proximity to high frequency regional transit, in something like this, we would typically more than likely recommend more of a parking cash out to disincentivize single occupant vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other board members with a question for staff? Going once, David?
Real quick, I can't remember if I saw what the current square footage of the two buildings that are being replaced is, does anyone have that in front of them?
Oh, the building is being replaced.
Yeah, the current square footage of the. If no one has it, that's fine, they just.
So I know that it's going to be a net of about 70,000 square feet when you add the building. I'm thinking it's around 70,000, give or take, that the two buildings that are existing are.
That's correct, they're roughly 35,000 square feet apiece.
Thank you. Perfect.
Yes, so just going back to the, how well you guys have been working with the East Boulder Planning Group. It's good that John is here, but I'm wondering from your perspective, has there been any particular issues that you have had to reconcile or still are in the process of reconciling with that group? From your perspective and maybe, you know, we'll see, from John's perspective, if we are all on the same page.
You know, we haven't, we've done our best to inform our architects of what's going on in the group so that they can make very informed design decisions throughout the process. So I think we've been, as you can see, there hasn't been that much change called for in the particular location of this building. So while I think that they're working in a very informed manner, we haven't designed something and then found ourselves in a position where we were forced to redesign in an effort to meet the group's goals, if that's your question.
So everything seems to be pretty well accepted so far.
Well, we haven't presented this project, I think there's actually several East Boulder Working Group members on the call right now that are hearing it, but it certainly hasn't been a topic of conversation for the working group, this particular project. We've used the working group to inform our architects of what's going on.
Okay, I think we'll be hearing from that group. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, last chance, planning board? Okay, all right, then I'm going to give it back to Elaine right before we go to public comment, just to address the issue of the transportation staff letter that came in right before the meeting in response to the bike path question. So if you want to go ahead and handle that, Elaine?
You bet. I'm just going to share the screen and I've got Edward's email handy. And I think that the bottom line is that it's a plan line that was established in 2003 and it was essentially a plan line without any kind of understanding of constructability until this happened, until this application came up. And so we had requested that they hire a geotech to review the impact on the berm by potentially having some sort of grading work that could connect in a straight path like the plan line up to the top of the berm. And there were concerns about risk to the structural stability of the berm. And so as Edward noted, any impacts to the berm or the removal would also impact the flood plain. And so for this reason, it wasn't being constructed as part of this review. So as Edward also pointed out, even though it's not being constructed, the plan line won't be removed. And the Boulder revised code, Hella could speak a little bit to this as well, but it doesn't permit us to require dedication of either right of way or an easement unless it's necessary to serve the site or unless the use itself creates the need for that right of way or easement. So in that regard, what we did request is that they ensure that there's a reservation along that south property line and essentially not add any buildings to that area. So the other recommendation is, of course, is that taking a better look at these connections in the next TMP and also part of the subcommunity mobility plan. It was also noted in the memo that there's other opportunities a little bit further south with another plan line that may have a little less constrained topography, but in essence, the recommendation in this case was to not mess with that berm. I hope that helps.
Kurt, I see your hand is raised, Kurt Norbeck has raised his hand. I'm going to, I'm going to have you wait until public comment on this matter and I'm considering that additional informational piece that Elaine just delivered as part of the staff presentation. So no need to rebut that right now, but you'll have your opportunity during public comment. Was that enough of an explanation that planning board members are comfortable moving on to public comment at this point or does anybody feel the need to ask Elaine to explain anything Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to Gene. Gene Gatz, if you would handle our public comment on this matter, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Harmon, of course. So as we mentioned before, please use the raise hand function if you would like to participate in the public hearing for this item. Participants on the phone, can you star nine to indicate that you'd like to raise your hand? And I'm just going to remind folks, you'll have three minutes. I'll give you a 30-second warning with a yellow piece of paper and that we do need a full name associated with each person's participation in the meeting. So with that, I'm seeing three at the moment, Kurt Norbeck, Lori Call and Lynn. And let's see. Kurt, I think you can unmute yourself. Kurt, I think you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. You can go ahead and start. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. I'm Kurt Norbeck with Community Cycles. We have, well, you saw the, the letter that we wrote and thank you for just ask for the response about this. We strongly feel that this path alignment is important. We don't feel that it was just sort of a plan line arbitrarily drawn. It, it aligns with Flatiron Parkway. And so that is very important in terms of giving a direct connection to Flatiron Parkway and the things to the west. It also aligns and connects directly to the path to the Stasio Fields and from there to 63rd Street. And so we feel that this alignment is not arbitrary. It is very important. We understand that there would be problems with removing fill from the berm, but it seems like it should be possible also to build a path by adding fill to the berm and in particular by angling up to the south to, to keep it at an ADA grade. So we are not convinced that this is not constructable. Our feeling is that if this were a proposed motor vehicle connection, that the city would make it happen. And a different standard consistently gets applied to pedestrian and bicycle facilities, which is not, in our view, it's, it's not acceptable. It's not consistent with the DMP. I will also note that consistency with the DMP is a site review criterion. 998B and C2 talk about meeting approved plans, including the DMP. And so in our view, it is not acceptable to just sort of push this aside or put it, you know, sweep it under the rug, so to speak. We do appreciate the added bike parking on this project and the reduction in curb cuts. Those aspects are great. Also quickly on parking, we would definitely support whether it be unbundling and pricing or parking cash out or some kind of a mechanism to apply a price signal to parking. We heard that currently the area is overparked by 25 to 34%, I think it was. And so we're talking about a 20% parking reduction on this site, which is still, even for this site, is less than the, the amount to which the area is overparked. So we would strongly support both potentially less parking and also some sort of price signal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kurt. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Lori Call and then Lynn Segal. Or you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Hi, I'm Lori Call, Senior Director of Policy Programs at the Boulder Chamber. I'm speaking tonight as a representative of the Boulder Chamber, but I've also had the opportunity to serve on the East Boulder Sub-Community Working Group over the past year. So I bring that lens to the discussion as well. The Flatiron Business Park was built decades ago and is well suited for some improvements. The project has a number of elements that will enhance the area. From an environmental standpoint, the integration of solar on the roof advances the community's renewable energy goals. Charging stations could incent electric vehicle usage. Improved pedestrian paths would increase walkability and the building enhancements would reduce the overall carbon footprint. It's a better use of space and a better use of natural resources. From the employee perspective, workers currently have external access to get to the restroom. So this would be a vast improvement to their quality of life at work. And the proposed outdoor space, improved landscaping and DAC would provide great opportunities for outside meetings and increased social distancing, which are even more valuable in this time of COVID-19. Flatiron Business Park is home to hundreds of Boulder's businesses and thousands of jobs. Many of its stated facilities are due for upgrading and this project would enhance the area and quality of work experience for employees at the site and throughout the business park. An investment in tired buildings like this is an investment in our community's economic vitality and is especially important consideration in these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, next up is Lynn. You should be able to unmute yourself. You can go ahead.
First of all, I don't understand why there's, first of all, I don't understand why you're building new office. Nobody goes to the office anymore. They're staying at home. They have to take care of their kids. So I don't get it. And and the parking. Bikes and bike parks. You could have a remote bike park. I mean, this is hard to talk about because I don't think the whole thing should happen, first of all. But if you are, you know, crazy enough to do more of what doesn't work, then I guess you might as well do it the best way possible. Which is like confusing for me to think about, I'm sorry. But you should have remote parks where people come with their bikes and then bring their bikes into the office park. Let's see. I mean, with the virus now, we need to spread out and I'm afraid we've got the blue line, which makes it kind of counterintuitive, but I, I do support keeping the blue line. I, the, the issue of, and also of having hybrid systems, because hybrid systems are working, are being used in the school systems and in everything. Like maybe there's two days a week that you have at your work. So you need a different, a complete different architecture for two days of work versus five days of work in that space. Also, I think it's better to also have use for the, for the space on the weekends, or if you just stratify when people work so that sometimes everybody's all together and the weekend, the space gets used too, because we have a constrained space in Boulder. And we should use all the space we've got. We should do that in our churches and a lot of things too. But, okay, the, the reason I don't want jobs more to start with is that jobs derive, high-end jobs especially derive high-end people, which derives high-end housing, which derives more services, which derives more out commuters, because those people doing the services can't afford to live here, which affects our Boulder Valley Comp Plan jobs housing imbalance, which causes more affordable housing demand for those service people, which also, and as you fill up affordable housing, that drives more services, because even the affordable housing, especially the high-end housing and the high-end jobs, but also the affordable housing drives up service, because everybody needs, you know, clerks and grocery people and what have you, and hospitals and all those services. And which drives, you know, more out commuters for more service jobs. So also, the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, if this developer wants to design based on what, on a 55 foot height limit that isn't there yet, then they should wait until the 55 foot limit. They shouldn't be pressuring you all in any way to be deriving an East Boulder Sub-Community Plan that will fit their needs. It's such, and the city is the
You gotta wrap it up. You're over time.
The egg. They decide how it's going to be. So the developer needs to wait or else they need to develop the way that we are set up now.
Thank you, Lynn.
The virus, you know, like, don't forget.
Okay.
Anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, Harmon, we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. All right. I, I don't know if there's any, any rebuttal for the applicant, or if you just want to forego those three extra minutes and we can get on to deliberation, but I have to offer it to you. Applicant?
I guess I, I'll just say one brief second and then Amanda, if you want to step in, but as it relates to the constructability of that bike connector, you know, we really were trying to find a way to do that. So I wish, I wish I could have sat down with, with Kurt and really shown him all the effort that went into that, because it was certainly something that was, we felt very interesting. And unfortunately, the constructability proved to be not doable. You know, I, I can only speak to myself, but I ride my bike every day and it's a big part of my life. And I really appreciate that. It would have been great to, to find a way to build that, but given the berm and everything else, it, it proved much more challenging than, than it really looks, unfortunately.
Yeah, I was going to say just that then. Thank you. And thank you for considering our application.
Hey, you're welcome. All right. So I'm going to start our deliberative process here among the planning board members. And I don't want to stick to the, the key issues. Go ahead, Lisa. You got a question? Okay. I'm going to stick to the key issues identified in the, in the staff report. So what we're trying to do here is determine whether or not this application is consistent with the comp plan, site review criteria and meets the criteria, the special criteria for parking reduction. So the first question is, is the proposed project consistent with the policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan? And I'm going to turn that around and make it into a negative poll to start, and then we can talk about it. So is there anyone, and if there is, please raise your hand on planning board, who believes that the project is inconsistent with the comp plan? Okay, well, I'll entertain discussion around the first issue then. Or, or somebody who wants to confirm that the consistency. Sarah?
I just have a question that has to do with, so in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, we have a whole chapter on sub-community plans, but there doesn't seem to be anything in the Title IX that gives us any framework for the, the timing issue. And I'm just curious if, if maybe Harmon, since you've been on the board longest, or, or John, if you can point to something in the Boulder Valley, I'm sorry, in the land use code that makes real the, the goals in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan vis a vis sub-community plans.
So, and I see staff stepping up also. So if I don't get it all, I'm, I'm sure that we can count on Hella, Charles, Kathleen to, to step in. But where the, where the comp plan compliance is present as a requirement for site review, that includes the sub-community plans, which are incorporated by reference into the comprehensive plan. So if you have a sub-community plan, like in North Boulder, where there's a sub-community plan, comprehensive plan compliance requires a review of the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan as well, since that plan is specific to the project that's in North Boulder, some hypothetical project in North Boulder. So when we think about comp plan compliance for that North Boulder project, the hypothetical that's in front of us, we go, okay, well, we have to look at comp plan, but we also have to look at North Boulder Sub-Community Plan. In this case, the, the issue is that the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan has not been approved. And there's a whole set of processes that it has to go through before it becomes legislatively approved by our city through planning board and through the city council to incorporate it into the comprehensive plan. So that's why we don't have to look at East Boulder Sub-Community Plan compliance as part of our comprehensive plan analysis of this project, because there's nothing there as part of the comp plan yet.
And if I may chime in, I, I look at it a little bit differently than Harmon. I think the sub-community plans and other adopted plans only come in through the specific site read criteria that reference them. I do not consider the Boulder Valley Comp Plan as incorporating adopted plans that are out there, but there are site review criteria that refer to adopted plans. And they do talk about adopted and, and just the due process requirements require that plans are actually adopted and that's how the code references it. So that's, compatibility criterion, for example, is one that references adopted plans for the area.
Okay. I appreciate that. I was trying to, given the reason that this was called up, I wanted to try to understand the connection between the two. So that's very both, both explanations and analyses is very helpful. Thank you.
So does somebody want to speak to the project's consistency with the comp plan? Or shall I just say that no, no member of planning board found the project inconsistent with the comprehensive plan policies and goals? And and we find that the application on balance meets the policies of the comp plan? And just get that on the record. David, do you want to add something to that?
I will. I, I do think that I want to acknowledge that we've we've, we've taken quite a bit of the applicant's time and the city staff time as well as board members. And I think it's an important subject, but because we've taken that time and because of the work that Sarah and I have done on the Use Table Subcommittee and the work that John's doing on East Boulder, I, I, there are some observations I would like to share. That doesn't change, you know, anything that in, on key issue one that, you know, I definitely think it's consistent with the policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. However, I do think that the reason that we have the Use Table Subcommittee work and the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan is that there are aspirations that are very clearly articulated in the comp plan that have, are a little bit out of alignment with our zoning. And so as a result, projects like these are kind of incented not to, to look into what can be done with mixed use with additional mixed use might actually also argue for more Sump principles, for example, because it might change the character of the area in a way that would do that. So there's a lot of things that are kind of interconnected here. We are going from 70,000 square feet of light industrial space to 144,000. That's over double. If, you know, that's approximately double. Are we going to remember that? Because we're, we talk about in section 2.21, we don't want to displace light industrial, but we've actually just doubled it. And so, and then 2.21 is being used as a real warning that, about putting something like a little bit of housing in these areas. Will we, will we remember that? We'll remember when we look at some of the other lots on this site that in fact, perhaps one of them could be used for a little bit of residential because of all the square footage of light industrial that we just added. So that's an interesting thing for the East Boulder Subcommittee to think about. Is how we, if there, if we're going to put some stopgaps in for displacing industrial, can we also acknowledge when we maybe have the opportunity to do some mixed use as well? So that once, I'm hoping that's, and, and the Use Table Subcommittee couldn't solve all that, right? Because we're really, the city council very specifically said they want East Boulder Sub-Community Plan to kind of drive a lot of that. So we, we made some comments and there will be a few things coming out of that, but really the heavy lifting is going to happen with East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. So that's where all the hope is on that. And then I also wanted to just say, because the Transportation Master Plan is a reference within the comp plan, I, I really appreciate that the berm was analyzed. I am not an expert on, on, on the inner workings of high-hazarding berms and all that stuff, and I totally trust the analysis that went into that. I do know that when you look at areas like, that are much higher populated, like the connection of campus over the creek, you can come up with some pretty amazingly structured bike solutions, like those two you know, aerial bike paths that are going up into campus now, which is pretty incredible. But this isn't that kind of a site. But I do hope that we don't lose that in the future, because the Transportation Master Plan did come out of observing that in fact, what's going on right now is people are taking their mountain bikes and just going right down the side of that berm, because they can. So, and it's not safe and it, and it's not equitable. So I don't want that. I don't want to lose that. So let's, let's, I know we're kicking the can down the road, but let's not lose that in the future. Thanks for giving me the time to say that.
Sure. And, and David, I want to embroider Sure. And, and David, I want to embroider, to use my favorite John Gerstle's expressions, on your, on your, your, your challenge around looking into how something like this ought to make us think about our zoning. And so, you know, what we learned tonight is that a business park is basically with, with a, in the addition of 144,000 square feet of new building that's underparked by 20% per the code, the whole business park then goes to 7% underparked, which leads me to believe that the, the business park is basically compliant with parking right now, before the, the addition of all this square footage. And yet, it's, it's compliant with parking per zoning. It, it in fact is overparked in reality by what we heard was 24 to 32%. So, you know, there's nothing arguably in, in the world of planning more interactive than floor area ratio and parking minimums among our limitations. And so if, you know, if we're looking at, what is the, the floor area ratio in light industrial in Boulder or industrial general in Boulder actually produce in terms of parking versus the minimums that are required? And it turns out, we have way too much parking. Maybe we ought to think about things like raising the FAR in that zoning district. Or if we're talking about, you know, planning for mixed use and we want to remain compliant with the comprehensive plan aspiration not to displace any industrial, then maybe we leave the industrial limitation at 0.5 FAR. But to the extent that a developer wants to add residential, they could add, you know, residential up to 0.7 FAR if they're not, you know, displacing any industrial general or industrial light or whatever. So, you know, that's my admonition to how we ought to think about the, the interaction of what we're seeing on the ground and what our zoning allows. Does anybody else want to, now that we've kind of opened it up a little bit for comment on that, want to say something before we move on? John?
Yeah, I, I would like to say that I think David's comments and your comments are, are exactly the way they should be. And I agree with them very much. There's a different, another aspect that we haven't talked about explicitly, but I think it's becoming more and more apparent in the sub-community planning that what we're doing with this project and what we'll be doing everywhere where there's new construction is basically displacing relatively low-rent, affordable industrial space with more expensive office or industrial space. And that's what's happening here, too. I'm quite expect that the, that the area in this new building that we're talking about will be much more expensive to rent than the area in the buildings that are going to be demolished. And it's still an unanswered question, how we, how we avoid that by making any change at all. I, I don't know what the answer is, but it's something that we have not considered explicitly anywhere that I'm aware of. But we need to start doing that.
Thanks, John. Appreciate that. And I think community benefit, like we discussed last week, may have some, some response to that. Lisa?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say I really appreciate staff feedback and other stuff around parking generally. And I think that probably the correct way to handle it overall is through the sub-community plan. Because, you know, if we apply it to one site individually, as you pointed out, Charles, and it's absolutely true, then you just push the parking elsewhere. So I just wanted to clarify that my comments around that were more not shutting ourselves off or not creating problems down the road when the sub-community plan is more in place. So when we look at things like higher FAR, different uses for that land, as opposed to trying to single this project out, because that doesn't feel quite right.
Thanks for that. Any other Planning Board member want to comment on this? The BVCP land use and policy consistency before we move on? Okay, thanks for everyone's comments. And the next question is regarding site review criteria consistency. And the way it was phrased is, does the project meet the applicable site review criteria in section 9214H of the Boulder Revised Code? I'll ask that as, does anyone, does anyone deem the project as not meeting the site review criteria? If so, raise your hand and please speak. Okay, so the, no one on the Planning Board felt that the project failed to meet the site review criteria, but it's still open for discussion. Is there anybody who wants to speak to the, the key issue? Is that, John?
No, I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean to raise my hand there.
Oh, no, that's okay. Does anybody want to just put on the record that they feel the project does meet the site review criteria and give a little color to that? Okay, then I'll, I'll say that I think the project meets the applicable site review criteria as outlined in the staff memorandum. And that's the, the Planning Board's opinion as well. So, final key question, does the 7% vehicular parking reduction meet the criteria of section 9214H2L of the Boulder Revised Code? Is there anyone who feels that it does not? Does anybody want to speak to the proposed 7% parking reduction? John?
Yes, I, I think it meets the, the code, but it doesn't meet our aspirations. And for that reason, that's why I was suggesting that there be some sort of unbundling or as staff suggests, of buyouts or something sort of like that. I think, you know, we're asked whether it meets the site review criteria, and it does, but, but not our aspirations.
Any other comments? Okay, then I'll, if there are no general comments, nobody wants to talk about the project in general terms, I'd call for a motion, if there is a motion maker. John? Or David, were you trying to make a motion?
I was muted, but John raised his hand if he'd like.
Oh, go ahead, David.
All right, I'll go ahead and move. I would move to approve Site Review Case Number LUR 2020-00008, incorporating the staff memorandum and the attached Site Review Criteria Checklist as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
Is there a second? It's like, John, did you second it, John?
Well, I, I wanted to offer a friendly.
Oh, okay.
This is now the time for that?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I wanted to add a condition that, that there be a staff, that there be, the staff proposal or suggestion for, for unbundling or for purchasing, buying out the, the parking rights of employees be incorporated into the approval at some point when, when there's adequate public transportation in the area. And the problem is that I, you know, that's supposed to happen along a raffle hall sometime in the next five years, but, but it's hard to define it, Dave.
All right, we've got a motion on the table by David, and it's been seconded by John, who also offered a friendly. And by our rules, only the motion maker has to accept the friendlies. So the question to David is, do you accept that?
I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to, you know, what we're asking for here. Because I, I would not want to impose upon this particular applicant thing, you know, a, a requirement for, for the present, which it doesn't sound like this would do, that would be unfair with regards to what's being done in this, in this area with other, other businesses. So, but it, but it doesn't sound like that's what you're saying. And I'm, I'm kind of, I guess, I mean, things change and, and, you know, condition, necessary conditions change. What I want to do is to make sure that when the, when the improved public transit is put into place, that we have the incentive for this landlord to, or this developer to encourage his employees to use it to the degree possible. And it seems to me that the staff suggestion was one way of accomplishing that. Well, I, I'm, I guess I'm, I, you know, I'm very supportive of some principles. And if, if it's worded in a way that I, I think that is, is fair with regards. I mean, maybe we could tie it to the, also the sub-community plan, you know, the, for the future, that, that parking in, in this area would be consistent with our aspirations around this sub-community plan, but I don't know.
If I may remind the board, too, that conditions of approval can only be imposed if without that condition, the project doesn't meet the review criteria.
But what Hella is saying also is that it's, it's hard after everyone on Planning Board agreed that the project meets the criteria to then apply a condition. And, and also, you know, to, to apply the condition as related to a parking reduction, I think that's, that's specifically tough because the criteria for the parking reduction appear to have been met. So you're gonna have to go back to a, a site review criteria comp plan policy that hasn't been.
Oh, you just remast you.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm persuaded sufficiently to withdraw my friendly here.
Okay.
Doesn't seem like there would be support for it anyway.
Okay, well, thanks for your thoughts. We're gonna, then, if there's no, is there any other discussion about the motion? Okay, I'm gonna make it the motion of the board. Planning Board Moves to Approve Site Review Case Number LUR 2020 Trip Quadruple 08, Incorporating the Staff Memo and the Attached Site Review Criteria Checklist as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memo. Call for a roll call vote. David Ensign?
Aye.
Peter Vitale?
Aye.
Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
Lisa Smith?
Aye.
Sarah Silver?
Aye.
John Gerstle?
Aye.
I vote aye. So we've approved the site review seven to nothing. Congratulations. And I'm gonna suggest that it's, it's close to eight o'clock. We take a five-minute break, come back at five of eight.
Thank you.
All right, we're back. And we're gonna move to item 5B. So 5B is a public hearing and recommendation, City Council, regarding ordinance 8409 that proposes to amend Title IX, the Land Use Code, and section 2-3-12, border zoning adjustment and building appeals, to clean up and clarify the land use code and related code sections. As usual, I'm gonna turn it over to Charles Farrow to start, our Development Review Manager. Charles, take it away.
Yep, I'm happy to turn it over to Carl Geller, who will be making the presentation, and Andrew Collins.
Okay, thanks, Charles. Good evening, Board members. Sure. Sorry, I'm not seeing the PowerPoint up on my screen. One moment. One moment. Andrew, any chance you might, oh, here it is. Sorry. Can people see this?
Yes.
Okay, sorry for the delay. Before the ordinance, before the the board tonight is draft ordinance 8409, which is a cleanup and code clarification ordinance of the land use code. So what the board will be considering tonight is an overview of all the changes that we've talked about with the intent behind them. We'll go into a little bit more detail on some additional changes. Are you getting a little bit of a delay here? It's frozen up. Andrew, you wanna see if you can try to share it from your your screen?
Yeah, I'll try and share it from my end here.
Sorry about that.
Navigate to the server real quick and pull it up. Looks like it's. Close this. Let's see. How was that? Is that visible?
See if you can advance it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So we'll start off with just an overview of some of the the focus on cleanups and the intent behind those in the ordinance. We'll also touch on some changes that we're making to meet current needs. And these are ones that we would say go beyond routine cleanup. And then we'll conclude with the staff recommendation and the proposed motion for the board. Next slide, please. So in your packet, there's 53 proposed changes that relate mostly to the land use code. There is one that touches Title II related to the Board of Zoning Appeals. These are changes that we've been monitoring for years of implementing the code. We've been marking up our codes based on things that we've heard from other staff, applicants and members of the public, basically things that we've been wanting to improve for some some time now. We're not gonna talk about all 53 code changes, given the volume, but we'll touch on all the themes that relate to each of them. So I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew to to kind of walk you through some of the examples.
Great, thanks, Carl, and good evening, board. So the proposed code amendments consist of a variety of code cleanups. These include corrections, which are updates to correct inaccuracies and discrepancies in the code, clarifications where we want to be more explicit and clear in the language so that there's a more clear intent that's indicated to the development community, the applicants and staff alike, as well as improving the language to make it more clear and understandable, graphic updates to make those more legible and clear as well, and then some additional changes that we'll talk about in the second half of the presentation that Carl will touch on a little bit more. So before we go through those examples, in the the packet you received, the attachment B contains the list of the 53 code changes. Just really quick, how those proposed code changes work is we simply have the existing language shown. The areas that have a strike through are the existing language that's proposed to be removed. The language that is underlined is the new proposed language to be added in. And then we also have included a brief reason for change beneath each proposed code change. And also in that packet, there are some different text colors, red and black. It's it's all means the same thing. It's simply our working document that we were working in, and it does align with and correspond to the ordinance, which is the attachment A in your packet. So in terms of the corrections, one example will be the the third change in the attachment B packet. This is the table. It's in a chapter two review processes. This is the summary chart of the administrative review processes. We're simply adding in the correct uses and taking out the uses that are no longer applicable. Similarly, we are correcting some of the language in the chapter six use standards where we talk about modifications for site review. This is actually, I think, code wide. So the site review is a modification, therefore should be modified standard, not a varied standard. And the varies more in line with a variance process through the border zoning appeals. And then we've also have updated some of the standards. So retail fuel sales, Sarah and David might recognize is one of the discussion points of a subcommittee for the use tables. It's also been an issue identified by our staff over the years. So going ahead and cleaning up that definition, that use category to align with the definition, which is simply fuel sales, and then correcting references throughout the document as well to be accurate. Second type is code clarifications. This is where we want to be more explicit in our language toward any vague interpretations that might come up. So one example of this is in the site review criteria C2 related to the modification. Development standards pertain to the schedule of intensity standards in Table 81. This is a standard that says you can do averaging of your floor area ratio across multiple building sites with a zoning district. So we're cleaning this up to state that you can actually average the entirety of the intensity standards in Table 81, but it has to apply to the multiple lots that are subject to the site review within the same zoning district. And that this average then cannot exceed the allowable limits for intensity or density that then permitted by the zoning district. So we're creating clear language that states you cannot increase the density or intensity through averaging and applies to multiple lots rather than building sites, which is kind of a bit of language that's not really anywhere else in the code. Another example would be under the minor amendment criteria for approved site plans. We're clarifying that if you want to do a subsequent reduction to your open space, to your approved site plan, that it cannot be more than 10% of the amount specified on your approved site plan and not and not less than the minimum required for the zoning district. The third type we have is language improvements, simply making it more clear for people to use and understand. The top example in red comes from the parking requirements for restaurants, which is based upon a number of indoor seats and outdoor seats. So the top part, which has all the strike through, we're cleaning that up to make it more digestible, breaking it down into chunks, keeping the standards the same, but just simplifying it so it's easier to understand. And the bottom example is the fences and wall standards and the development standards, a section of the code. And so similarly, we are restructuring the the standards to make it more easy to understand. And then we're also including some updates to the graphics as well related to fences and walls and your property lines, all in effort to kind of clean these up. Again, these are issues that have been identified by staff over the years. Some examples of graphic updates, again, trying to make the graphics more legible. So today, for example, you can't see really what what some of these instances are saying. So just updating these, giving them a refresh to make them more clear. Another example is the measurement of building height. Here's in the code, making them more three dimensional and kind of a step by step breakdown of how you actually go about measuring building height per the land use code and then cities charter. So with that, I'll hand it back to Carl to go over the additional changes.
Thanks, Andrew. So I'm gonna focus on some additional changes that we've identified over the last few years that we've we'd categorize as more than just cleanup that we wanted. So there's kind of like two categories, changes to meet current needs. These are things just to keep the code updated to respond to modern day issues that may not have been anticipated in the past. So, you know, the growing number of solar installations, digital submissions, some things that are outdated. We wanna bring up to date. The second part is to try to address unintended consequences. Over the past few years, we've identified some things that we want to respond to that have routinely not worked well or resulted in in some design solutions that haven't worked. So we wanted to improve upon those. Next slide, please. So this this first slide is the minor modification criteria that's in the site review section. It's subsection K, so one through seven are all those changes you see up there are mostly just the cleanup category. But one thing that keeps coming up with minor modifications is how to address solar panels. Do they require a minor modification in a project that had a site review? Or can it just go right to building permit? And that question has come up quite a bit. So we wanted to add a criterion and also amend Section 97-7, which relates to appurtenances, and just make it clear that if you're doing flush mounted solar panels on a building, that you could just go right to building permit. But if you're in a site review and you don't do flush mounted, then you're subject to a minor modification. So subsection eight, which is at the bottom, is basically showing the criteria that you would be held to, making sure that when you put ground mounted solar on your site, that you're not lowering the open space below the minimum amount or you're not increasing the building coverage on the site or that if you put it on a building, that the massing is still appropriate to the original approval. So next slide, please. This change focuses on the use table. This this is something that was caught before we were even working on on the use table and standards project that we talked with you last week about. So there's two different defined uses in the table. There's fuel sales and fuel service stations, and they're very similar. Fuel sales is just like a gas station with a with a small retail element. A fuel service station is a gas station with a retail element plus an automotive shop. So when we were going through the code, if you can look at this, when you look at the BCS district or the downtown districts, it actually requires a use review for fuel sales, but only a conditional use for a fuel service station. So we felt that, you know, arguably, a fuel service station has more impacts than a fuel sales station. So why would it jump down to a conditional use? So we felt in these two scenarios, it'd be appropriate to make the conditional use a use review. Next slide, please. So this is in our Form and Bulk Standards. There's a line item in the Form and Bulk Standards that relates to coverage. And this is something that it basically requires a maximum coverage of accessory structures to not exceed the coverage of the principal building, which, you know, depending on a site is could be in, you know, not necessarily uniformly applied across the board on the footprint of a building, of the principal building. So we felt that that section was really outdated. It was put in the code a long time ago, well before the compatible development standards were put in place when when the building coverage limits were added to sites. So we felt like this section was outdated and should be removed. Next slide, please. So now we're looking at the subdivision standards. There's been some changes in state law that relate to subdivisions. When we get a plat and it goes through the review process and then goes for recording, in the past, it was traditionally printed on a Mylar sheet and signed and then sent to the county for recording. The state regulations have changed to allow other forms beyond just Mylar, like paper and electronic. And also in light of of the pandemic that we're in, where everything has gone to a more digital standard, we wanted to update the code to include what the state allows, like Mylar plus paper or electronic format with some basic parameters for that format. We're also just changing the language related to vicinity map. It talks about a one inch equals 100 feet reduction of the plat, which doesn't always result in a small vicinity map. It's almost as big as a plat. So we felt we should just use the language that's already in the preliminary plat language related to the vicinity map. The change on the bottom of the screen relates to financial guarantees. So in the subdivision process, before the subdivision agreement can be executed and then the property is allowed to subdivide, the city does need a financial guarantee to ensure that a development actually gets built. We don't want it to be, you know, the developer to go bankrupt and not have the money to complete roads and to complete the development. So subset F basically lists what what the city can consider for a financial guarantee. Performance bonds have not always been reliable. So it's been the practice of the city for the for as long as I've I've worked here to not accept performance bonds, then that it's more appropriate to get escrows from the bank or other forms. So we're proposing to remove that requirement or option from the subdivision regs. Next slide, please. So this is where we get into avoidance of unintended consequences. This is in the definitions section. So at the top, there's two definitions here that relate to like breweries, wineries and distilleries. So it's the definition for tap room and tasting room. So when these regulations were were put in place several years ago, the intent was to keep the sites largely industrial. So keep them as manufacturing, keep them as as the actual brewing facility, and then allow a small, you know, ta- tap room or tasting room. You know, most of the time when these applicants come in, it's been fine. They meet the the restrictions of the size of the tap room or the tasting room. But we have come across some proposals where, because the tap room is restricted in size, they've pushed their outdoor seating outside and had substantially more outdoor seating, which makes the tap room and the draw to that place much bigger than was originally intended. So we wanted to make sure that these definitions encompassed the outdoor seating areas as well, which is how it's been implemented in recent years. So the second definition is the landscape setback, which is basically the distance from a property line to a building that has to be landscaped. And what we've seen is are some problems in particularly like the downtown where the landscape setback refers to the building above grade. It does not refer to any structure below grade. And what we've seen is some proposals where they've had their structural parking all the way up to the property line with the building setback, you know, 10, 15, 20 feet. And what that does is it eliminates the ability to get long live trees in the tree lawn. You don't you don't get the soil volume that you need. And it's resulted in replacement of of trees or the trees that have died or you can't get any large trees along the streetscape. So we're proposing to revise this this to include above and below grade structure in the setback. Next slide, please. And the last change is related to the Form Based Code. So as the board knows, the Form Based Code was put into place in 2016. You know, it's a relatively new thing. We're not proposing a lot of changes at this point, but there's two changes here we wanted to talk about. So there's the minor modification process for Form Based Codes. It was left because we didn't really know what those would look like. The the criteria were pretty minimal and actually were quite limiting. They only they they basically said you could only do 10 changes. And I was like, what does that mean? And it talked about, you know, some changes along the streetscape. So we wanted to be a little bit more explicit about what could be done in a minor modification. So what this does is it makes it clear that you can change your building, but it's limited to these criteria. So you basically have to keep your same, you know, window fenestration. You're allowed to drop it by a certain percentage, but you can't fall below the minimum transparency, obviously, that's required per floor. You can transpose certain building bays. It also is more clear about what does that mean when it says 10 changes? Does that mean, you know, only 10 windows can change in size? Or is it 10, you know, like you can change the windows or you could you could change a doorway? So subsection three here is meant to make it clear that it's 10 types of changes that are allowed, but it's still within the parameters of these criteria. So the second change for the Form Based Code is on the bottom. This was actually something that was already reviewed by planning board and council, but by mistake, the percentage was changed. We were when we were going through the process, there's the maximum site and purview coverage. And for most of the the building sites in the Form Based Code, it allowed a maximum of 70%. An original proposal was to to have it lower, and we felt like 65% was too limiting. And we've seen exceptions asked for this in a number of different proposals. And we wanted to make this the same percentages like the other categories in the Form Based Code, the other building types. So we wanted to make sure the code gets cleaned up and that we get back to the 70%, which was the original intent. The reason it wasn't 70% is it was purely a clerical thing where the wrong page of an ordinance was added when it went before. where the wrong page of an ordinance was added when it went before council in the second reading and got signed. So we just wanted to clean that up. Next slide, please. So that concludes our presentation. So we're recommending that Planning Board recommend approval of the ordinance to City Council, which is a requirement to fix mistakes, clarify the existing code sections, update graphics, and improve the readability of the code. So that concludes our presentation. Happy to take some questions. But we can put up the Planning Board motion slide if it's requested.
Okay, thanks Carl, and thank you Andrew for all that. I was one of the nerds who was up in the middle of the night reading all the red lines. So I know how much work went into it and appreciate it. And I'll open it up to Planning Board to ask questions of staff. Sarah Silver.
Thanks. I actually, my question, first of all, thank you for all the work you've done. I was not up in the middle of the night, but I did read through the whole thing. And I guess I have a question as to whether, why, or how might we, is it possible to utilize these code cleanups to address the challenge that we have all talked about with the public notice requirements? In 9-4-3A, Table 42, the public notice for type 6, which is any development review applications, it still says that information has to go out to property owners within 600 feet. And we've all talked about including renters within 600 feet. And I'm just curious, is this an opportunity for us to add that language? Or when would we have that opportunity?
It is possible to add that. We have talked about this in the past. We kind of look at that change as a more substantive change that might be more appropriate for a separate ordinance. There are some complications with adding the additional mailings. Just in how it's a much more time-consuming and complicating process with the postal service. So I think we'd have to work with our mapping division to kind of map that out a little bit more about how that would work. And I think it might be more appropriate to put into a more substantive ordinance.
Yeah, we work with a third-party vendor who does our mailing list. So there's also some budget implications that would go into changing how we do our mailings at this point.
So, okay, so is it possible to imagine a well, this is an ordinance, not something we can send a recommendation on. I just would like to keep our focus on this little tiny thing that we've talked about for quite a while. So I'm curious what staff's suggestion might be about how we move this little thing up to the top of our list of to-dos.
I mean, I think you could make a motion that it be added, or you could actually make a separate motion that City Council consider it in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Anything else, Sarah, around that?
No.
Anybody else want to ask a question of staff? John?
Yeah, I had just a few, what might seem quite niggling things, but they were unclear to me. First of all, the question of a home occupation. There was some language about the need for those practicing a home occupation to register with the city manager and so on. And given the present situation where everybody and their brother is staying home, working from home, it made me wonder, what is a home occupation versus other people just working at home? Is there some definition that I'm not aware of?
There is a definition in the code about home occupation. I think home occupation focuses more on a business that might be run from the house rather than employees just working at home. What's proposed in the ordinance is not a change from current practice. What we're trying to clarify is that we've listed home occupations as a conditional use in the code for years. And what that generally implies is that someone has to come in with a conditional use application with a fee and submit to the city, and we review it, and then issue a notice of disposition. That's not how we've done it with home occupations. It's always been an over-the-counter type thing where they just submit, basically like an affidavit that agrees to all the criteria in the code. And then it gets filed with the planning department as a record of this person agreeing to those. So that's what we wanted to put in the code to make it clear that this does not require a fee or an administrative review.
I have no quibble with that. I'm still trying to figure out if anybody has their own little business, you know, say, running, doing some consulting from home. Does that mean, where there's no public visiting them or anything like that? Does that mean they need to do this?
I think typically if somebody has to get a business license for their residence, that's when we would like to see a home occupation affidavit.
Okay, well, thank you. Then another one was
Before you go on, John.
Oh.
I just looked up the definition. And it says the home occupation means an occupation or profession conducted as an accessory use within a dwelling unit. So, you know, my take is it is that if you're a consultant and you're working at home, you're conducting your profession within the dwelling use. And the question is, is it an accessory within the dwelling unit? And the question is, is it an accessory use? Or is it just working from home? And if, you know, we can dig into what an accessory use is, and it looks like just taking your work home and working at your desk and making your calls from home doesn't really trigger that, then I think leave the definition alone. But it's great that you brought that up.
Just to remind the board, one of the things that we're going to be looking at through the Use Standards and Table Project is this very point about home occupations. How to address them better in the code.
Okay, well, I think it's becoming more and more apparent that there's a need for thinking about that. So I'm glad that's on the list.
John, I interrupted you, you can go ahead.
Yeah, so then on page 59 of 144, there's a section on fences of various types and heights that can be built. And on that page, it talks about fences that can be up to 12 feet high with the consent of neighbors. And my question is, what happens if one of the neighbors sells his house and moves out? And the new neighbor and the new purchaser who moves in doesn't like that 12-foot-high fence? Does he have any rights to get that fence lowered?
We've never seen that circumstance. I think the expectation is that whoever buys the property is aware of the condition. Again, this is not a change. The current code currently states this.
I understand that, but I guess I was surprised to learn that there was a possibility for a 12-foot-high fence. And I can imagine that where there may have been consent at one point with one set of neighbors, that that can change with new neighbors. So is that pretty clear that that is a permanent situation until all three of them decide to change it? Maybe Hella has some thoughts on that.
I will add, John, before Hella jumps in, that the 12-foot max height is only available, apparently, in situations where there's a pretty big slope or a retaining wall with a grade change.
I understand, but it's just
Make that clear to the public, too. Hella?
So I have to admit, I haven't seen the agreements that are being accepted. But just looking at it, I would assume that it would only require agreement when the fence is being constructed. And at that point in time, the property owner who constructs the fence has been relying on that agreement and should be allowed to keep the fence. And this would be based on city regulations. So I don't think that the city would go in and ask that a fence be taken down because a neighbor has changed his mind afterwards. It's an existing condition at that point in time.
Okay, well, thank you.
Harmon, was John just channeling the RNC and saying that there's 12-foot fences coming for us?
And he's going to make you pay for them.
Well, it's only when there's a slope issue that you could have such a fence.
Right. That's right. Slope or a retaining wall or a
Right. Then my third question concerning, is on page 29 of 144, concerning what can go in to side setback areas and so on. And I didn't see any mention of air conditioners. And the reason I thought of that specifically is because air conditioners with the noise that they generate and so on are sometimes regarded as one of the more obnoxious things that can happen in a side setback yard. And I wondered if there is any city regulation or control over things like air conditioners at all with respect to noise and nuisance aspects.
We've had conversations with our zoning folks on air conditioners. It is not explicitly mentioned in the code. I think there's a noise issue to some extent if it gets too close to a property line meeting the decibels, but it's not addressed in the code. It's something that we could look into further.
Actually, I think if you look at the bottom of page 29 of the packet in subsection F, the air conditioning compressors are noted as an insubstantial encroachment.
That's right.
But if we wanted to talk about, you know, actually requiring some form of a setback, there probably need to be some analysis on, you know, what's the decibel level at 3 feet? What's it at 5 feet? And whether or not, you know, different types of units are noisier than others. So I think that's why it's been considered an insubstantial encroachment.
Well
City does enforcement based on complaints of air conditioning noise, so that
Can you say that again, please?
If there's a complaint about air conditioning noise, the city does look into that. And there can be enforcement actions for that if the decibel exceeds what's allowed to go across the property line.
Well, I guess it's unclear to me whether in this language, an air conditioning compressor is regarded as an insubstantial encroachment or not for a setback.
John, it is. It's an insubstantial encroachment.
I see. And so if there was to be any management of that, it would have to involve an explicit new language in this section or someplace close. Well, I think that, I would think that's something that the city would benefit from the staff looking into, because I've heard plenty of complaints on neighbors doing that. So those were my immediate questions here.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else on the board with questions or points to make?
So Are you asking for points now? Or
You want to make a point, go ahead.
Sure, I just want to say that Sarah took the exact question that I had as well with section 9.4.3. And I do understand that when there's a cost involved in a change, that that can bring it out of the meets-current needs category to some extent. However, if there's an interest from the board to send an additional motion language to City Council on this, I would be quite interested in that. Because I'm looking at the letter to City Council from 2015, and it was there then, that same request that we look at all property or all residents, not just property owners. And I think that, you know, if it takes a little bit of extra work, it might be okay as long as we, City Council can understand what the cost might be and assure that that's impacts are managed.
So, you know, the way I would respond to that from my perspective, I'm not going to speak for anybody but me, is that the general bent of the item in front of us right now is these are ministerial, apolitical changes, cleanups. And so, you know, I would be against a motion that recommends a change to City Council in that respect. I would be for a second motion that says, you know, that Planning Board would like to make a recommendation to Council that as part of future code updates of a substantive nature, you know, they really prioritize noticing, you know, everybody, not just property owners. So that's how I would put it.
Good news, I've already drafted one. I've learned my lesson after a year and a half on the board.
And that leaves three and a half years to go. All right, so that's my feeling. And, you know, the same, sort of commenting back on what John pointed out, the number of things that John pointed out. You know, I think, given the nature of this code update, I just hope that staff hears John and notes his concerns. And I wouldn't support that we recommend any changes. Not that I think John's recommending any changes right now. But if he were, you know, regarding moving an air conditioner, for example, out of the insubstantial category, I don't think that that's a decision that needs to be made in a code cleanup item. But I think that that should be noted as something that ought to be looked at.
Yeah, that's exactly the intent that I had in commenting on that.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have more comments or questions? David?
I'll just add, other people have thanked the staff for this presentation. But I wanted to also point out that we got this summary in three different formats. We got explanations in Appendix B. We got the ordinance changes in Appendix A. And then we got this fantastic presentation that really helped us to kind of keep everything in perspective. So that's a lot of different ways that we were able to look at this. And it did raise some things that I will probably be asking about in the future, but we don't have time to do here. But we did, you know, there's some things that, like John's observations, my eyes were open to some pretty interesting things that I didn't notice before. So thank you for all of that.
Great. Anyone else have any thoughts? Lupita, Lisa, I haven't heard from you. Peter? All good? You don't have to.
Oh, God, I appreciate the effort everyone's putting in and glad we're cleaning it up. I still have my scars from the OSO Other Academy on 311 Mapleton. So I'm glad to see that we're getting with the future.
All right.
I also read through them, and they all made sense to me. And the discussion that's happened so far seems solid, so nothing particular to add.
Okay, great. Lupita?
That was it. It all made sense, and I think it's always good to clean up. And I'm sure there will be additional ones in the future. So I appreciate the work the staff has been doing.
Great, yeah, this is supposed to be an annual, so you should see this again. I'll be gone by then. I'll entertain a motion.
Um, are we doing a public hearing?
Oh, you're right. I'm going to open it up for members of the public who might have comments about this matter. And point Gene Gatzas as the moderator for the public hearing.
Thank you, Harmon. Again, for folks, anybody who would like to speak to this item, please use the raise hand function in the lower part of your screen. I see at least one at the moment, Kurt Nordback. So Kurt, you have three minutes, and you should be able to unmute yourself. And you can go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you. Kurt Nordback, speaking for myself this time. This is a tangential comment, and I apologize for that. But one of the changes related to clarifying the parking requirements for duplexes. And it highlighted And it highlighted the fact that the parking requirements for duplexes per unit are higher than the parking requirements for single family detached houses, which makes no sense whatsoever. And so I realized that this is, the, the scope of this is just cleanup. But it highlights again the need for fixing our parking code. And my understanding is that unfortunately, because of staffing changes at the city, the, the parking code update, which has been scheduled for the last five years or so, has been postponed yet again. So I'm just urging the board, I guess, to put whatever pressure possible on city council to prioritize this because again, it highlights the total inconsistencies in our parking requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. I see Lynn Segal. Lynn, you can go ahead and there we go. Unmute yourself.
Can you hear? Is my voice distorted at all?
No, we can hear you.
Sometimes my computer has a mind of its own. Just says what it wants. To segue on Kurt, the value of parking now in Boulder, I don't know the specifics, but I know it's $200,000 a space on the Hill Hotel. So it ranges, you know, structured parking versus surface parking. And it's to the point where considering you're putting homeless people on parking spaces in the industrial zone and stuff, that, that parking spaces are more valuable than housing spaces. It's seriously like crazy. So so considering that, you know, we need to consider other forms of transportation and not big buses. Because no one wants to ride in a big bus because the viral load is high. You, even in a small bus or a van, an electric van, you're going to have people adjacent to each other, but the viral load is much lower because there's less taunt. Well, for one, you're going less far distances hopefully, which is good if you have separate parking space, a separate parking center where you then funnel the, the smaller vans into shorter routes. Because the shortness of the time that you're exposed to the virus is better. You know, all of these things need to be reconsidered. Everything, you shouldn't be doing anything until we have a Boulder Valley complant that's updated to the virus. And I don't know if anyone's spoken about that, but it seems intuitive to me. So so what Kurt said is true, you know, keeping the parking low. But how we keep the parking low is what's important for, you know, a master plan of how we move people around in the age of COVID. Um, let's see. The air conditioning thing, I'm pretty sure that mini splits are damn quiet compared to standard, you know, air conditioners. So people could be given a bonus of some sort to encourage mini splits. That's a thought. Access reuse or work home. That was kind of interesting. That needs to be reconsidered because of the situation with the virus. People are at home. Need to think about, you know, what if they just started an LLC? Then are they a business? Then is, is the city going to come in and tell them what to do just because they're doing their business out of their house? It seems like a good, a good thing for libertarians to get upset about, but yeah. That's, I didn't have much comments from this because I was distracted with other stuff. I was writing you a letter, poor filing all the things I said earlier. But yeah, go for it. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Lynn. Thanks Kurt, too, for your comments. I see no other hands. So Carmen, back to you.
Okay, thanks and apologies for jumping the gun there. It was not my intention. I'm just a little off tonight. So my fault. All right, well, I, I will entertain a motion. And the motion on the table has to do with item 5B and we see it up on the screen.
So what the fuck happened here?
And we can make sure that.
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion.
Great, Sarah. Make the motion.
So I'm making the motion on council recommending to city council adopt ordinance 8409 that proposes to amend Title IX land use code in section 3, 2 dash 3 dash 12, Board of Zoning Adjustment and Building Appeals, BRC 1981, to clean up and clarify the land use codes and related code sections.
And I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. So the motion's by Silver, a second is by Smith. Any discussion to the motion?
Can I just clarify that this other motion I'd like to make is separate from this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that you probably want to phrase that in terms of planning board further resolves that. We can ask Kala if she agrees with me. So is there any discussion to the motion that's been made and seconded? Okay, then I'm going to make that the motion of the board. Planning board recommends that city council adopt ordinance 8409 that proposes to amend Title IX land use code in section 2 dash 3 dash 12, Board of Zoning Adjustment and Building Appeals, BRC 1981, to clean up and clarify land use code and related code sections. Call for a roll call vote here, starting with Peter.
Hi.
And David?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lupita?
Hi.
And I will vote aye. So the motion passes seven to nothing. Sarah?
All right. I'd like to make a second motion and I'm sure I'll have lots of help in, in, in making this correct. Planning board further resolves a recommendation to recommend to city council that it consider in the future substantial change to the public notification requirements for development review processes, 9 dash 4 dash 3A, Table 4 dash 2, to include all residents within 600 feet of subject property.
I'll second that. And I'll further add that I don't think there's anything that I would change about that, but the other board members who would.
What?
Wow.
Wow.
Perfect.
Now let's.
Hope everyone?
Wait, let's make sure. Don't we need to make sure that that was actually captured by Cindy?
I think Cindy's got a tape. Cindy, do you need us to restate that?
Or if it's written down, Sarah, can you email it to her?
Particular, that part where Harmon agreed.
Where Harmon said it was perfect and got five stars.
Another line here and go into print.
I have it. And I also want to let Andrew know that you're sharing your screen for everybody to see. There you go. I, I've got it. I've got you on tape and I've got it. So we're good.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna repeat the motion and make it the motion of the board because I, I didn't type it out and I, I can't remember it all. I'm gonna take it on faith that we've got audio and video of this and say that it is the motion of the board made by Sarah and seconded by me. And I'm gonna call a roll call vote. David?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lupita?
Hi.
And I'll vote aye. So the second motion by Silver passes seven to nothing.
Yay.
Great job. All right.
We'll have to call Crystal and let her know.
Yeah, she'll be excited to hear that. She advocated for that for a long time.
I, I actually try to remember to email her whenever this comes up.
So then I, I also want to congratulate Carl and Andrew and staff. And thank you for all that work. Good luck at city council.
Thanks. Thanks very much.
All right. So we're done with the public hearing items for tonight. We'll start with matters with the planning board. Do any board members have any matters? Reports from your subcommittee assignments or anything that you want to make?
I have a question, which I, I had put to Cindy, but I'll put to everyone. So I may be the last person on planning board who actually uses her paper version of Title IX. But I, I do use the paper version. I find it much easier to, for the multiple levels of questions that we have to deal with. And I reckon, realize that I have an now outdated version certainly of chapter six, the, the use tables, which I know will be updated eventually as well. But is there a regular, regularly scheduled printout of new material? I really want to make sure I'm operating from update, from the most recent material.
Normally, in a normal world, we would get the updates sent to us at the office. We're not in the office. And so I, Charles, I don't know how to get them. They're not sent to me. I'm not the one who receives them. There's another person in our office that receives them.
I can see if they're, you know, currently being sent to the office and then if and how we'd be able to get them to you.
Oh.
Yeah, that would, that would be super, super, super helpful for me. I don't know if anyone else is still that old fashioned, but I really, oh, Hella is, yay. And John and Charles. So I'd just like to really make a request if someone has even a minute of extra time, and I know you guys are super busy, to see where those updates might be and whether they could be mailed to us, if we could come pick them up somewhere. It would just be incredibly, incredibly helpful.
I'll have to check and see what I can, I'll check into it and I'll see what I find.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Cindy, just as a, there's a concept that, you know, we could just email, you, you could email out the replacement sheets as PDFs. And we could print them off and replace on our own. We have three hole punches. And just because they're not, you know, that kind of tan paper doesn't mean anything. So, you know, if, if that's a way to go, you know, if you're preparing paper updates, I, I think we could probably do that.
We'll look into it, Harmon. Typically the supplements that we get and what we pay for, they actually give us banded hard copies for as many of the, you know, numbers of hard copy codes that we're currently maintaining. So look at that as an alternative.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll check in. I'll check into it tomorrow. It may be Monday when I find out something, but I'll check into it.
Thanks, Cindy.
Yeah.
All right. And I use the, I use the paper code sometimes too, but you know, not a deal for me.
I get enough for all of you.
Yeah. Any other matters from the planning board?
I just wanted to check in Lupita and see if you wanted to go to landmarks board this coming month. It's September 9th, I believe. Or if you wanted me to cover that one.
I think they have a retreat coming up too, a week before.
It's the second part of a retreat. Yep.
I know the meeting is September 9th because I, I might be presenting at it, so.
I'm so sorry, Lupita, did you hear? Oh, you're muted. Sorry.
Meeting is September 9th and I think the mini retreat is the 31st, the second part. On Monday.
Lupita, you should unmute. I think Lisa still wants to hear from you.
I think she's looking.
Yeah, I was looking at my schedule. Sorry, I was looking at my. And then of course my picture goes away, so I don't even know that I'm muted until I keep hearing. It was okay. I need to get back to that window. Sorry about that. On the 9th and it is in the morning? No, because last time I had a problem with the way that was sent to me. I need to make sure that the schedule is, and the invitation is sent correctly to me because last time I did my own fixing of what I thought was wrong. And then I ended up messing, making a big mess. So I, if it is in the morning, fine. If it isn't the afternoon.
It's an evening meeting. So the, if we're talking about Wednesday, September 9th, the regular landmarks board meeting, those are typically at 6:00 PM.
But the other ones are the retreat.
The retreat is the 31st. I do not have that pulled up in front of me currently.
I, I'll enter the other one as. Yeah, I think I can put it in.
Sorry, Lupita, which, which one were, and it's either way. I'm happy to attend. I just knew that you had some issues with the last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure to check in and see what you wanted for the next one, just to make sure one of us attended.
I will, I, I will put it on my calendar for the 9th.
Okay. Great.
The retreat is the 31st at 3 o'clock.
Cool. And do we typically cover those? I don't think anyone attended the first half of the treat. Is that something that you'd like to have?
Typically not.
Okay, that's what I thought. So other than perhaps plugging in to hear what's going on, I don't think we'll have formal representation at the retreat unless someone thinks we need that.
Lisa, sometimes they might ask you to join, but if they're not, or you can ask them if they like you, but it's kind of by invitation, I think. So I don't think it's required.
Cool. Thank you.
So you know, they asked David when he was on landmarks and they asked me about landmarks.
Well, they only got to see me once, so would have to give them a little time.
Maybe next year.
Maybe next year.
Okay, so has that been resolved? Anything else from, from planning board? Okay, well, I'm gonna, my remarks from planning board are Lisa, that's a cool old Valmont Colorado background with Boulder in the distance. David, I like your pan to the use table. Nice work on that background. And Peter, I don't know if that's real. Or you just have all those books and cubbies or is that a background?
Well, I'm really trying to accomplish some aspirations here.
Great. Working out. All right. So matters from the director, Cindy, Charles, anyone else from the staff?
Just a couple of quick updates. We conducted the first round of interviews for the new planning and development services director. So the office of the city manager will create a shortlist and figure out what the rest of the process looks like. The other thing I think I would mention is that we received a concept plan application for a partial redevelopment and kind of infill of the First Presbyterian Church near 15th and Canyon. A portion of it is within a historic district and a portion of it is outside of the historic district. So we'll be actually having, for the first time in a long time, a joint landmarks planning board hearing to discuss the concept plan. It won't be till later on in the fall, but I just wanted to put it on folks' radar that we just got the application and we're looking at dates to get both boards together to review the application.
Thank you.
Anything else, Cindy, that I'm missing?
No, has anyone noticed anything different about me?
Hair.
I'm not, I'm not wearing my glasses.
Yeah.
Did you get LASIK?
No, I've had an eye infection since April. Finally can wear contacts. Yay. So.
I was like, is the cat in the picture? Where's your cat?
She's.
She has no eyes, but.
No, nothing, no updates. No, just a meeting next week. So.
You look great, Cindy. I did notice. I thought it was the hair.
No, hair is out of control. Haircut.
The COVID hair. And Charles, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't, I just, you know, a little off tonight. I missed the plug for the US Census. I'll try to get that in on the next meeting.
Please do. Thanks. We're at about 73%, so we're actually above our, our goal. So let's keep it going north of there.
Where were we in 2016 as a comp?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look. I should know that.
Mentioned I've been doing census in the hill for the last, I don't know, month. And it was great to finally go from a lot of empty places to getting the kids to answer. And it's a challenge sometimes to convince them. But, you know, I've been looking forward to hearing that we actually, you know, increasing the, the, you know, the return rates.
Good work. All right. Hella, is there anything from the city attorney to provide? Alright, Hella, is there anything from the city attorney to provide to us?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Alright, does anybody want to debrief around this meeting? Feel free.
Now, I just wanted to thank you for, for considering the, that call up that we dealt with so carefully. I think it was very useful also for the sub-community planning experience that, and what folks should be thinking about when they're doing that. So thank you.
Sarah?
I just wanted, can I ask Charles to just give us a little bit of feedback on council's feedback on, as long as we were up on, on our meeting for seven hours, the feedback from council on the community benefit, because I think we left very sort of discombobulated and really not, didn't give them much direction. I'm just curious.
You guys did a great job. Your feedback was really helpful. They supported community benefit moving forward, the three benefits, affordable commercial space for the arts, cultural uses, human and social services. They supported the Arts Commission providing recommendations. They supported requiring, you know, the uses in perpetuity, which I think the, or discussed in detail. Let me think, what else? They supported penalty fees as long as there were some flexibility.
What about the whole question of the mechanism by which, I mean, that seems to me to be the key? Like, is, is the conversation that you all are pursuing on, at staff level open enough to imagine different forms, different, to be creative about mechanisms? Because I think that was sort of where we got where we hit a wall in some ways.
When you say mechanisms?
Well, you know, a question like, well, would this, would it be onsite or would it be a voucher or would it be? And, and these are just, you know, the framework of the, of the community benefit connecting to the height is a very specific frame. And I think that we did, I think we were all sort of asking, not so much is this the right thing to connect to the other thing, but it wasn't really clear how such an idea could be implemented and, which undermines our voicing support for those, those three questions that you, three of the four questions that you asked us. So I was just curious if there's any discussion at council about more, more sort of open exploration by staff than just this height connecting to these three particular uses?
Not especially.
Okay.
I think they're, we're, we're pretty well in agreement with that construct. Carl did do a little summary though. If you want, we can forward it out to the board.
Sure, that, I'd love to see that. Thank you.
Were there any comments on Appendix J in the future of that? I'm curious.
I don't think that was asked, was it?
Wasn't it asked?
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
I just wanted to add on to what John was saying about, I, I, every, every time I think of the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan, this particular site review that we just looked at pops into my mind as something that has an awful lot of learning, learnings attached to it. And I, so I really am pleased that Kathleen came and that, John, you were listening so much because I think that the, the group can really think about some things. And I, and I do absolutely agree with you that one of the things that we struggle with is, you know, that whole 2.21 is with displacing light industrial. We don't take into account the rent per square footage that can change when you upgrade properties and the, the whole economics of it is something that comes with a lot of legal stuff and it's very interesting territory. And it'll give Hella lots of work if people start coming up with interesting ideas of what we could put in place.
No, it's, you know, the story of unintended consequences, but it's pretty important.
Okay. Yeah, that was a lively discussion. I'm glad we had it. You know, and I'm concerned, you know, it sounds like there's, there's some disconnect with long-range planning and the East Boulder Subcommunity Planning Process and the dictates of the comprehensive plan, so you know, I was glad we had a little bit of an opportunity to just lay out some of our thoughts around that. I had an opportunity to lay out mine. So hopefully everybody heard. Alright, anything else?